Public hearing. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Halden.
Here.
Mr. Mullen.
Here.
Mr. Mullin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mrs. Sauerbrun.
Here.
Mr. Stanger.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Weston.
Here.
Again, I will be reading the legal notice that was published in the Des Moines Lake State Department of Recyclables for Tyoka County. Please take notice that a public hearing shall be held on Local Law introductory number B of 2020. The Tyoka County mandatory source separation law commence on January 1st, 2021, and repealing Local Law number two of the year 1992 enacted on August 1st, 1992, entitled Tyoka County Recycling and Source Separation Law in the Hubbard Auditorium of the Ronald V. Dory County Office Building, 56 Main Street, O'Wega, New York, by Wednesday, September 23rd at 6:05 PM. All persons desiring to present written or oral comments may be submitted at time. Thank you. The presenter for this public hearing on Source Separation Law is Dr. Ellen Pratt, Sustainability Mayor. Good evening. Thank you. All of you that are attending to us soon. I will be reviewing the history of the 1992 Local Law, Tyoka County Recycling and Source Separation, and why it needs to be updated. I will also review Tyoka County Recycling Program, including current bid results. There are two things we need to combine together that I'm going to separate out. So one is the 2020 Local Law, Source Separation, and the other is the county-wide curbside recycling admitted results and program going forward. New York State Solid Waste Act of 1988 requires all counties to adopt local laws and order of ordinance requiring the separation and segregation of recyclable and reusable materials from solid waste. In 1992, Tyoka County passed the county recycling and source separation. This requires recyclable and reusable materials to be separated and segregated from garbage. We need to update we need to update the 1992 Local Law because we need to ensure recycling continues in Tyoka County. And we need to remove the information such as the solid waste district, which is referred to in the document. In 1992, Tyoka County initiated the county-wide curbside recycling program. Our current program is weekly county-wide curbside recycling. The contract expires at the end of this year. We went out to bid in June. The lowest bid was more than the double of the current cost. This bid was for five weekly service instead of our current weekly. The increase is $1.26 million annually. So per perspective, the lowest bid was $2.48 million per year, which is $12.48 over the five-year contract. You may still be asking what's the problem? Again, the cost of the program will more than double. New York State has a 2% property tax cap. Based on 2020 budget numbers, the new cost equates to 5.1% increase for just recycling. If the county is over the cap, it negatively impacts the receipt of any state grants that are contingent on staying at this tax cap, such as race the age. So what do other counties do? From our research, only three out of 62 counties in New York State have a county-wide curbside recycling funded through their county. New York State, DC, Region 7, only two, Tyoka and Hamptons County, provide county-wide curbside recycling. Most counties do not provide county-wide curbside recycling. They require private haulers, private haulers and municipalities that provide garbage to also collect recycling. Private haulers and local municipalities that collect garbage, curbside must also collect recycling curbside. If you do not have curbside garbage collection, residents separate their garbage to a transfer station or landfill, bring the recycling with them and place it in the appropriate location. The proposed recycling program, for those of you who drop your garbage off at one of the local transfer stations, you can drop the recycling off in recycling containers there. If your garbage is collected at a curb, a hauler you choose, it will be provided recycling, likely with a surcharge. If your municipality collects the garbage, they will provide recycling collection. The recycling line will be removed for your 2021 property tax cap. You can all reuse your used recycling compost. Thank you. For comments, comments will be submitted by finally at recyclingcomments@co.tyoka.ny.us through our cover first. A PDF of this presentation will be on the county webpage, Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. So people that signed up to receive, first we have Esther Woods from Nichols, New York.
Hey, hey, Molly, no, hey.
And speak directly into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Esther Woods and I'm from Nichols and I am a business owner of a garbage company. So my question is, if we pick up recycling, which we've never done before, where do we go with the recycling? You know, I know Taylor's home, the recycling centers, but do they have to take the recycling from us for a fee? I understand, but that's my question. Is will they take it from us? And I'm not sure if they will or not. And so what is the cost to dump the recycling at the facility? And that's what we need to come up with a tally, do you hear me or not? So I was talking to a gentleman here who said that they haven't come up with a cost yet. So it would be advantageous to know what the cost would be because it's only three months. So it's kind of a scramble for some of us local haulers to try to come quickly now with a way that we're going to run for the recycling. And I understand that we're going to have to give the cost to the customer and that's going to be another problem because I've already had people calling saying, do we have to pay for this? And I kind of told them I wasn't sure because at this point I just heard if we've got to pay to get rid of the recycling or not. So they are questioning how much they're going to be charged per month for the recycling. And I understand, you know, that this is probably going to be once a month or maybe every other week because it's probably going to be too much of a cost to run every single week to pick up the recycling. The other thing, as a, just as a resident of Nichols, honestly, I could pay more in my taxes to have the recycling because on our road, there's probably 15 houses. And I see every week, a lot of them, at least four or five, have no trash service. I'm not sure what they're doing with their trash service, whether they're taking to the transfer station or maybe taking it to work. I don't know, but they do have recycling out. So if they don't have trash service and they're not getting the free recycling, I'm kind of afraid that that's all going to go in the trash. I think people are going to be dissuaded from recycling and it's going to go in the garbage more than I think people, than you guys are aware of. I think a lot of it's going to go in the trash. So that's going to be issue with the landfill, you know? They don't want that in the trash. So that's kind of my concerns as a business owner and then as a, just a resident of Tyoka County is that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you notice, I forgot to mention that this meeting is being zoned and so your images will be on the recording tomorrow. They're comfortable with having your pictures or you're not taking part in my panel. We'll see. And it has also been recorded so all of your comments are being recorded. Jim Foren, Foreman, from Lookout.
Little legislators, it's been a while since I've talked to you last time. I'm here not questioning, questioning the process of assistance because I represent the village of North Valley and we are a trash hauler currently and we continue, we will continue to be so. We, we have sought information from General Garbage. We have sought information from Dr. Pratt, from Attorney DeWitt, guidance from Legislature Sullivan. And we have some information so far as, and right now we have options that I have shared with our trustees. The reason for me coming here tonight is not for any of that because we have to get moving on this. We will rely on the RFPs by the county possibly. And whatever we do, we hope with Attorney's advice that it be an emergency declaration to do what we do without the normal process. Now, with that being said, what we do seek and request is additional help by Tyoka County for the numbers. I'm an accountant, so I understand the numbers, but I don't know history. Taylor's picked up for years curbside in the village of North Valley and is not certain, they have no idea what the tonnage is for the village. And so in quick conversation with them, I am requesting, well, we'll see, possibly a short-term contract to be revised later, something like that. Now, what I am seeking though, is as much information as the county can provide through Dr. Pratt, probably at this point as to any, from the revenue side and from the expense side, although I guess we're now going to ignore the revenue because I'm guessing there is no revenue and maybe not for the foreseeable future either. So that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for little guidance by the county. They know for history that we do not know. That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Anne Moll, Molly. Molly, I'm sorry, your name is Anne O'Wega from Applejack, New York.
Yes, I am, I'm from Long Tree Grove in Applejack. I'm here on behalf of 625 residents who signed my petition. I started a petition on change.org at 12 o'clock this afternoon and by 6 o'clock I had 625 signatures. I'm going to read you the petition. The petition is to the Tyoka County Legislature, the Tyoka County Legislature wants to end the highly successful county-wide recycling program and replace it with a system of each owner responsible to find a way to recycle at the owner's cost. We understand one Tyoka County to continue the very recycling. Without curbside recycling, it will be more expensive and
Thank you. Doug Bartman, O'Wega, New York.
My name is Doug Bartman from O'Wega County. And I want to thank you for this opportunity. I would like to read three quotes. The first, "The difference recycling makes is a big deal." The second quote, "Recycling supports local jobs and helps keep prices lower on the goods you buy every day." And the third quote, "It conserves energy and produces less pollution, protecting our environment." These are your words. They come from your website. And I agree with those words and since it is on your website, I have to believe that you also believe in what you've told the taxpayers of the county for the last several years. The plan to discontinue the current recycling program is not in the best interest of the residents of our town. It is short-sighted taxpayers' money along the road. My understanding is that the low bid, which was submitted by Tyoka County, was commensurate with paying for recycling. This was researched by a sustainability coordinator. So it's not a matter of this not being a fair bid. The county has a long history of successful recycling with Tyoka County. The bid was rejected because it was about twice as much as the previous bid. This is the result of expenses going up and the market for recycled products going down. You have told the taxpayers the good news is that what that choice will be. The average house market value of $100,000 pays less than $1 per week under the current program. Double that and it will be less than $2. Less than a gallon of gas, that gallon of gas they would use to haul recycling to the drop site. Some people may not be motivated to recycle. Some will try to mix it in with their garbage, which is by the way illegal. Haulers will not be allowed to haul this mix to landfills. Landfills will begin to refuse garbage from Tyoka County haulers. Some will burn it in their backyards, not a welcome activity for their neighbors. Some will mix their garbage in with their recyclables at unmonitored drop-offs. And some will deposit their papers, bottles and cans along our roadways. Tourism's new model, welcome to the litter gateway of the Fingerheads. In the long run, it may not save us money and it is probably with multitude of potential issues. But what I find very disappointing about this is how discussion have been presented to those of us who pay the bill and are most affected by this decision. Where was the foresight or the courage to make this more public earlier in the process? 20,000 recycled stocks are made that includes households and businesses. Retail stores might haul their many boxes to a drop off. Landfills might haul hundreds of bottles and cans to a drop off. What will they pay for that service? The current county's scale will not help them. I understand and respect the difficult decisions the legislature has to make in the past to have the courage to increase taxes for the many departments and services that are important to a vibrant and sustainable community. Please have the courage to increase taxes to support this, as you put it, big deal. Sometimes it costs money to do the right thing. Thank you.
Next, we have Cynthia Herrick from Richford.
I'd like to speak in opposition to county-type of local law B. My name is Cynthia Herrick. I'm a resident of the town of Richford where I'm also on the town board and serve as the deputy supervisor. I'm going to respond as a resident, a town official and a taxpayer. As a resident, I appreciate that the convenience of curbside recycling encourages recycling. This law changed by making recycling less convenient encourages sending recyclables to landfills, which is environmentally backward and wasteful. Or the burning of recyclables, which is wasteful, releases toxins into the air and is illegal in the form of open burning in the spring every year. In Richford, few people use a garbage service. The town provides a garbage truck for residents to bring garbage for a fee. This law would require what for us as residents? For us each to take our recyclables to a central recycling facility in where? O'Wega? Barton? With, will there be a transfer station in northern Tyoka County? Driving our recycling so far is unrealistic and maximizes costs to residents from far-flung towns like Richford. The legislature is supposed to represent us too. As a town board member and deputy supervisor, I'm concerned about the impact this law would have on our town's taxes. Will the town be required to accept recyclables since we have a garbage truck, which is a registered transfer station? We don't have the infrastructure to accept recyclables nor the manpower and fuel budget to bring them to a distant recycling facility or to hire company to bring the materials for us. Shifting this cost to the town would require a significant increase in taxes, which is unlikely to be offset by the decrease in county taxes. We are also not being given sufficient time as a town to plan this out to start January 1st. We'd have to pass a law to exceed the tax cap, explore all the alternatives, come up with a budget and acquire a truck or container all before January 1st, 2020. As a taxpayer, I am opposed to this law because I understand the concept of economies of scale. The larger the recycling operation, the more economical it necessarily can be. This law increases total costs and/or taxes by eliminating the savings of having a large scale and pushes those higher costs onto the towns or individuals. I urge the legislature to vote for a local law B. It's bad for the residents and taxpayers of Richford and is happening to quickly.
Thank you. Mike House, O'Wega, New York. Adam O'Malley, O'Wega, New York.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Nobody likes to raise taxes. I'm sure the legislature even more than the normal person. And I would like to say that the cost of recycling to the county is a known number. The cost to residents is an unknown number. It could turn out to be more expensive to do away with this law for residents than it is to keep it. The cost for a resident who lives 10 miles away from a transfer station at the current operating cost of $0.59 a mile, if they go every two weeks, it's going to cost them $300 a year. The cost to recycle is minimized for the county system so you get scales on operational scales that help minimize the cost for everybody. Increased recycling is probably going to end up in the waste stream, which is not good for anybody. I'd just like to remind the legislature that recycling was not started by a bunch of stary environmentalists. It was started by the legislature making a hard-headed decision to decrease the waste stream and landfill costs were going up. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Our last speaker is Rick Rogers from Spencer, New York.
This is a holdup. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Sorry, that's one of my favorite lines.
Code red jokes.
Well, if you've got some money you want to put out, it's great. I live in Spencer. I'm a rich family, a high school teacher. I'm also presently on the school board of the Spencer Minnetonka School District. So as an educator, as someone who's dedicated their lives to children and teaching children and the importance of what we as adults do with our children, I think there are some significant reasons why you should consider continuing recycling in this county. For one, I didn't realize that Tompkins and Tewa already only made two counties and this area doesn't do this and I'm very proud of that. You can actually say that we offer this service. It's significant. So for many years, we've been teaching children the importance of recycling. And why is that? It's because that we know that all the stuff that we humans consume every day, when we're done with it, basically two things happen. Number one, it gets recycled or it goes to a gas tank. We know that landfills all across the entire planet, not just in this country, are significant contributors to methane in the atmosphere. We know methane is one of the major greenhouse gases. Whether you are a climate change denier or whether you believe it or not, science tells us that the earth right now is in some pretty serious, a serious place. All you need to do is look at what's happening in the fires in Washington or in California, with the impact of hurricanes in the south. We know the climate is changing. It's determined by human behavior. So we, as a school district and throughout New York, have been working to teach children the importance of what they do with the stuff that they bring to school every day. I'd like to be proud to say in Spencer Minnetonka, we have a compost program where all our food waste is collected and is composted at our high school, which is significant. So the importance of keeping stuff out of landfills is significant because of the consequences of that. So by recycling, in this county, every single family in term into the county may not be able to stop the fires out west. They may not be able to stop the hurricanes in the south or the flooding, but they can make a contribution at an individual family level by recycling. It's something we can do. It's a choice. So it's very important, and I feel, that you as a legislature continue to support that effort by allowing the recycling to continue. I know you have a fiscal responsibility to keep your budget out of the way. Is that me? So I would ask, I believe most families would take the tax, planning more to continue recycling because it's so significant and what it means. But I hope that you will not let this program go to keep the recycling in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I close, would you reserve anybody else that wants to speak that changed their mind or anything? Okay? Then we will close this meeting. Who's Mr. Mary? Nobody's got an argument with this one now. We are there. I'm Carol Bryan, O'Wega, New York.
I just want to say that I learned some information by coming to this meeting tonight. And I listened to Esther speak about being a hauler and not having adequate time or information for a big business venture. And I, as a citizen who values recycling very much, was appalled when I first learned about it. I understand the immense increase for that. I understand the immense increase for that, for that service. But like Mr. Rogers, I believe, from Spencer Van Etten, who spoke about our youth, I thought, what will we say to our youth? Our youth are our teachers when it comes to saving our planet. What will our county say about this decision? I would agree that an increase in taxes, of course, I don't pay taxes, so it's easy for me to say an increase in taxes. But I do think if people were given the choice whether to drop this wonderful service that we have been accustomed to or suddenly finding lots of stuff in our landfill, it will be in our landfill, I can assure you. If you, if you walk around, I mean, I'm limited to Oweebo in my walking, but I look at those recycle bins and I see them and I know where, exactly where they're going. I think we need more time, we need more information before such an important decision is made. Thank you.
Okay, so is there more people that wish to speak? So I will close this meeting at this time. Thank you for coming up.